Okay, call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for September 29th, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, good evening. All the selectmen are present, as is Town Administrator Derek Sullivan. Mr. Bowen, Town Counsel, will not be with us this evening.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Campina.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Constitution, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I like the pacing. Announcements. Alan.
Okay, first off, those fellow members of the Jewish faith, Yom Kippur was yesterday. It's always a fun day. Basically fasting for 24 hours, no work, no business, nothing else but that plus prayers all day. It's an interesting holiday because you ask, you're basically praying for all the dead who's passed away in the last year, and also for people who died maybe 40, 50 years ago even. Then when you get past that, then you have what we call asking God forgiveness for all our sins that we did, and also people who also sin. And it's interesting. It takes about an hour. There's probably over 100 that we read off on the actual service and stuff. And it's, I finally feel where Jewish guilt comes from. One piece says, forgive a person of a certain thing, and the next one says you should do just the opposite. So there's no question why we're confused in life as things go along. The only nice thing about it is you basically, you have a clean slate starting today, and you have a whole year to go back at it again and then change it again. That's it.
Nothing.
Jim, you know your thing?
What are we doing now?
Announcements.
We're in announcements?
We're in announcements.
Yeah, we did talk, could be in later zone, but briefly, we were talking the other day and touched on the subject of adjudicatory boards and for the associate members to try to get some training in their first year to attend some courses. So I think we briefly touched on that, and we might want to send something out to anybody in the associate positions and maybe find some programs to attend. That's an important thing, not just to go to the meetings, but to attend something outside of the board.
Yeah, and understanding the regulations you're dealing with.
Right. So yeah, that's announcement, I guess. I'll keep it brief.
Just as an update for Jim, normally in September, there are courses for at least three or four days every week, and as many as seven or eight, depending on locations all over the state. Unfortunately, this year because of the COVID, there are no courses this year.
Yeah, and each of those groups sometimes is organizations throughout the state which will run programs specific for what they do. And you know, it's just a little something.
It's important because of their regional planning, or they call RPAs. There's 13 of them all over the state, and they're the ones who run the programs.
And then with the ConCom, you got the State Conservation Commission that runs program.
Yeah, that's unholy oak in the planning.
Maybe they'll do it online, you know?
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I'm hoping they do something because I know I took-
I'm making notes while you guys are talking, so.
Yeah, I think I, on the first five years on the planning board, I averaged about 80 a year that I actually did.
That's just you.
That's just me. I ended up with enough points for a degree, actually. It is important, though. It's one of the areas that we very weaken. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks. Judy?
Yes, I have several, thank you. Would like to remind people that Damian's pantry is open every Thursday and Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30. Clients can visit every four weeks. You need to bring identification if you're signing up for the first time. Good Shepherd's Table takeout meals are every Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00. Good Shepherd has a food pantry the first Tuesday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00. Turning Point and Baby Point have day resource centers for the homeless and near homeless. They have a website, and they also have a phone number of 508-291-0535 if you need help with being nearly homeless, if you have young children and you're not able to afford care. Want to congratulate the Wareham High School Key Club, which adopted Minehead Avenue five years ago under the Don't Trash Wareham banner. Each semester, with the exception of the spring semester, the Key Club group goes out and picks up the junk, trash, detritus, and whatever else you want to call it, along Minehead Avenue. This year, they were aided, as they are every year, by Tom Bickie, who loads up his pickup truck and takes the junk to the dump. Key Club is a community-minded service club, and we're very proud to have them as partners at Don't Trash Wareham. Thanks go to A.D. Makepeace and the Wareham Fire Department. They started a challenge back in May to see which group could raise the most donations in terms of blood donations for the American Red Cross and the South Coast Health conglomerate. They have raised over 130 donations since May, and they are going to continue through the end of the year. They have three more dates where you can sign up to donate, October 21st, November 17th, December 16th, and you can register at admakepeace.com. The challenge between Makepeace and the fire department, the Wareham Fire Department, netted $100 to their favorite charity, which happened to be Don't Trash Wareham. The dog park affiliation of Wareham, otherwise known as D-Paws, which was started in 2014 by a group of people who wanted a dog park in Wareham, has met its number, its first goal of raising $10,000, mostly through your donations of cans and bottles. So they're in the process of writing their Stanton grant for the completion of the dog park. They are going to be having a winter fundraiser, and it will be, you will pay a certain amount of money to submit a picture of your dog, and it's going to be a calendar contest. So the dog, the winning dog will be on the cover, and he or she may be sprinkled throughout, but there will probably be 12 winners in a calendar that is then sold to the community. I urge you to support that when it comes out. And certainly, those of us who are dog owners are going to be sending in donations and pictures of our favorites, okay? And speaking of pictures, I just want to say that the social media groups in this town produce some of the most fabulous photographs of Wareham. Thank you so much for the birds, the sunsets, the boats, even beach pictures. You guys and gals are doing a really wonderful job of promoting Wareham's beauty, and I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here for citizens comments? Doesn't look like it. Board comments.
Where is she? Where is she?
She's in the garage sleeping.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Board comments. Alan?
I'm gonna do the governor's release under the COVID-19 update, just so you know, under B, because it fits better there than we usually stick it. The other thing is, I've been asked probably five or six times in the last four or five days about Halloween, Halloween parties, et cetera. The report I'll give in a little bit explains some of that, but basically with the change of the governor's rules today, step two, which Wareham will fit into, there'll be the possibility of people having outdoor parties, and I'll give you their numbers and stuff, but it looks like if people basically practice, you know, social distancing, masks, whatever, there can be some Halloween parties instead of nothing at all. That's the only thing I have right now.
Okay, thanks. Patrick?
No, I'm good.
Judy?
I'm gonna do it later on.
Judy?
Uh, no, thank you.
Jim?
No.
Okay, I don't know everything either. Appointments, reappointments, interviews, don't have any licenses and permits?
Yes, we have an application from Red Robin, 2421 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, for a temporary outdoor seating liquor license. This is issued under the rules and regulations for the increased areas for outdoor seating, per the governor. The applicant has fulfilled all of the requirements with the exception of the Board of Health. And the Board of Health will sign off on the outdoor seating when the seating plan is complete and compliant with the guidelines. So we know that that hasn't been done, but they understand, the Board of Health understands that that would have to be done before this license was issued.
So moved.
So the motion would be to-
Conditional motion? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it, it, it's not traditional because you're gonna add the following-
Conditional.
Conditional.
Okay.
Condition on them getting a Board of Health sign off. That's Patrick's motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Patrick, second by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Collection bins, do we want to wait on this, since that's always an interesting issue, and you've even got it on the agenda?
The only place we've ever allowed these in recent times has been at the school.
Yep.
We actually, yeah.
Because they have to take care of them, as far as we're concerned.
Right.
Because everywhere else, they turn into be a junk collector.
Yep. We actually do have on the agenda an application from the school, well, through the school, by Bay State Textile, Inc., which has been licensed by this board for three or four years since we started the process. The business manager from the school has asked for two locations. One would be right out here at Spillane Field, and the other would be at the high school. They had bins at Deacon's, but they took them away because they got to be garbage pits.
Yep.
So my recommendation would be, and we waived the fee for the school, the fee is $100.
Yep.
My recommendation would be to approve the application from Bay State Textile, Inc. for the collection bins at Wareham High School and Wareham Middle-
Alan already made a motion.
It's not middle school. It's actually Wareham High School. I guess that really is technically middle school.
I just have one caveat to that, too.
One there and one down.
There's one there and there's-
None for Deacon's?
No, they took Deacon's away because they were getting mattresses and dead chairs.
It became a drop-off.
Yeah, it became what it shouldn't have been. Yep.
Patrick?
I have one caveat, though. I, I want to see it conditional, that it remains clean and used properly, or we can order it to be removed immediately.
Well, we can anyway.
Well, but I'm just, I'm just saying, so when they get a license, they think they can do it forever.
We're the lords of the bins.
And the ones, the only ones that we've allowed so far around town was the ones at Deacon's, and they turned into be a collection pit.
Yep.
And they were a problem. Now they're gone. So now they're coming up here, and they're going to put them up by the high school and over here, right?
No, they've been here for the same time. They had them here at the high school and at Deacon's.
Well, the high school was still-
The high school was fine.
Was there? Okay.
This one here, I call it Spillane, but I guess it's technically middle.
It's fine also.
And Deacon's. And these two have always been fine. It was the Deacon-
All right, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that if they go into a pit, they're out of here.
If they become a problem, they-
And I want the customer company that's handling them to understand that.
They, yeah.
They're gone.
They know.
The school has also stepped up and said they'd be responsible as well. The only reason why I go for it.
Good, because I don't want to have any more of these things.
Why they had them removed.
Yeah, the school was the one that yanked out of Deacon's, so they didn't have to be told.
This is, this is the reason-
Okay, we have a motion from-
Me.
Alan? Alan beat you to it.
Second.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Judy. Jim has a question?
Yeah, so this is just a general question. When you have multiple locations, would it be $100 per location?
Yes.
So it's basically waiving $200 fee, $200 in fees for the school?
That's correct.
Okay.
School benefits are on it, so.
Well, we're only taking it out of our own pocket if we did that, just-
What?
If we, if we, if we made them pay, we're just taking it out of our own pockets anyway.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for a clarification. I didn't say anything about waiving the fee. I wanted to know if it was per, per site, and it wasn't just a-
Oh, yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
No, it's per bin.
Yeah, it's per bin, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Alrighty, let's jump downtown.
And just let me update you, just, let me update you. We have discovered at least two illegal bins in town. We have sent the land owner, the property owner, and the owner of the bins, letters telling them they have 10 days to either apply and whatever, or start paying the fine. Because they are, in fact, dump sites.
Where are they?
Uh, one is at Noonan Trucking, across from West Wareham.
Okay.
And then there's another one, I'm not sure of the address, but it's on what I call the east side of Cranberry Highway.
In the West Wareham side?
No, in the East Wareham side.
The East Wareham side? Hmm.
And what did you ask? Could they apply?
Either they apply or they remove them.
Yep. Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I guess now we're all set from the presentation regarding the sewer project financing from the State Revolving Fund. Come on up, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for having us.
If you'll introduce yourselves again for the record.
Sure. Russ Kleikamp, engineer with GHD.
Mark Drainville, principal with GHD.
Could you both do me a favor and bring your mic closer to your mouth?
You're gonna almost eat those things.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't you fill us in on the, what this loan program is about, and how it is we're eligible, and what we need to do to get it?
Sure, sure. So I put a document together. I did watch the meeting from last time on YouTube, and I have to apologize for the confusion with the way the article is written. And sincerely, we do, you know, there should have been more information in there. So we put together a timeline of all the events, and it gives a breakdown of all the projects. I'd like to hand this out, if that would be acceptable.
Thanks, Russ. Sure you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Can you tell me the other gentleman's name again?
Mark Drainville, I thought you were a business guy.
Yeah. Mark, can you just spell your last name for me, please?
D-R-A-I-N-V, as in Victor, I-L-L-E.
Thank you. And is it Mark with a K or a C?
C.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So the projects that we're talking about for a water pollution control facility, this, what we had talked about in the past, this $10 million number, this was actually developed, started planning on it back in 2018, and it's comprised of three main projects. One of the projects is the installation of additional equalization basins. The town, the WPCF, is having an issue with very high INI flows. So what we're proposing to do to help mitigate those is to put in some additional equalization. There's about 2 million gallons of capacity at the treatment facility right now, and we're proposing to add in an additional 2.7 million gallons. Looking back on our numbers, we really, this came to light, at least for GHD, in March of 2018. If you remember, we had the three nor'easters back to back to back, and it really put a lot of stress on the town's infrastructure, especially the sewer system. We went back, looked at the flows, looked at the numbers, calculated that to handle that storm, the water pollution control facility would have needed about 1.3 million gallons of additional equalization. We were fortunate to work with CZM, the Office of Coastal Zone Management, to come up with a design, and what we just opened for construction now, for additional equalization basins that total up to 2.7 million. So we feel very confident that we have adequate sizing to help mitigate these higher INI flows. Now, again, it's equalization. I won't go into the whole long-winded description of what it's for, but you don't want to be using these equalization basins to store wastewater for long periods of time. It's not how equalization works, and it's not recommended for treatment facilities, just because a lot of issues happen with that. Odors, for one, and some other concerns. So the first project of that nine, well, let me say $10 million. 1 million of that is set aside for the engineering. That's a sum of money that the State Revolving Fund or the SRF Fund, it will not cover that, so the town has to handle that separately. But for the construction funding, and also including the engineering during construction, the State Revolving Fund will pay for that. So that's the 9 million. So that's where the 10 million comes from, the 1 million, 9 million. So we have the one project, the equalization basins. The second project is additional denitrification filters. A few of the issues now is, one, the plant is not in compliance with current codes. You have to be able to take the denitrification filters offline and still have a redundant filter to run your flow through. So we want to bring the plant back up to code. But even now, under the current conditions, the existing denitrification filters are seeing issues with solids, with plugging, with things like that, and we have no, if we take them offline, the WPCF is forced to do a non-permitted diversion. Basically, they have to stop discharging to the Agua M River, and they use a depression area. It's a red flag. It's something that we want to try to get away from. So that's the second project, is to add in-
You already had that.
We already approved it, huh?
To add in the denitrification filters.
Jim was just remembering, that was already approved at town meeting, the denitrification. They've got that in the back of this document here, the second, third page.
Yeah, I saw that. And didn't we approve the additional pit, too?
Correct. I believe that was in the October 2019.
Yeah, so-
At town meeting with 2.5-
So those are already approved.
Correct.
And then you want to add some new ones and bundle it together for one?
Correct, to put underneath the funding.
Okay, go ahead. I just-
And then the last project's the odor control. We haven't come to a definitive solution with exactly what we're gonna do. We had talked about potentially a primary basin or covering the existing basins. We have to, we just got a contract signed up that allows us to do the preliminary design to figure out what the best option is for the town. Obviously, trying to reduce the odors as much as possible for the lowest cost is usually the, you know, the most preferred alternative.
Well, since we've been chasing it since 2008 at least, it's about time we do something, don't you think?
Understood. So those are our three, our three projects. Now, again, when we first started planning these projects, you know, we have this $10 million number. Those were, I wouldn't even call them estimates, more of order of magnitude, you know, we really didn't even have a set of design plans to do a detailed cost estimate, so we have to, we have to present the number. And this is one of the hardest parts about consulting engineering, because the first number you say for a project is a number that everybody remembers. So we have to have a number that's high enough to cover the projects, but we can't inflate it too much because, you know, it's this exorbitant number that, you know, you can't say it's gonna be 30 million when you think it's gonna be 10 million. So it's a challenge to get the right number. So as we've been moving forward through the years, for example, the additional equalization basins got funding, design funding through the Office of Coastal Zone Management, and then we just had the bid opening for those. We had estimated, the engineer's estimate for the construction was 2.1 million dollars. We had five bids. They came in from 1.7 all the way up to 2.3. The average was very close to the 2.1. So we're fortunate getting that 1.7 million dollar bid from a very qualified contractor. So on the back of this document, I just put a list of, you know, what the budgetary cost was, and then what the actual cost, and it goes all the way back to even the plant evaluation. We had talked about $150,000 number. Would that be enough to come up with definitive costs? And again, on the spot, we have to say, we think it'll be enough, but then when we crunch the numbers, it was really 128,000 is what we came up with. The total budget for the equalization basins was 2.5 million. Now we can see the total budget, or the actual cost is, you know, 1.874, so there's a difference there. The engineering, this million-dollar engineering that we're talking about, because we got some grants to offset the engineering fees associated with the equalization basins, the actual engineering number is $550,000. We'll be presenting that agreement to the Board of Sewer Commissioners at the next meeting and talking about that. So we can start better planning what these, again, for the engineering, I mean, that's something the town has to cover. So it's not going to be the million dollars, it's the 550,000, you know, provided it goes through the sewer commission and the necessary approvals. But we still have the D-Nite filter and the odor control that's out there. We're talking now with Mr. Campina, the director of the WPCF, about the denitrification filters, and getting final sizing and putting the effort into that. And then we also have the odor control, which is a little bit of a, I don't want to call it a wild card, but if we end up covering, if we determine that covering the existing equalization lagoons out there now is the best alternative, we've seen some, seen some very high estimates in the past. So we want to be able to capture that entire $9 million. So the essence of the article, and I also printed out, you know, verbatim, and I can hand this out if any of the members would like to see this, this is the guidance from DEP, but it basically says that the town has to demonstrate it has pre-approved the, the total project costs, both ineligible and eligible. So for this, it would be the $10 million, $10 million, $10 million total. Some of these-
I would need a copy of that for the minutes, please. Thank you.
Just hand it over to- This is directly from the-
Thank you.
SRF application. So this is where we'd have to have at a town meeting article, the, a warrant article to appropriate the borrowing of the $10 million total for this. Now, in the past, at the last two town meetings, I believe we've checked off the list some of these projects. So again, I'm not the expert in writing warrant articles, so maybe we can have a discussion about the proper wording and the proper structure of the, of the article for this town meeting.
Yep.
With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Bond Council's gonna have to get involved in that.
Hmm?
Bond Council, right?
We sent it to Bond Council.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait and see.
And they'll, they'll remedy it through the motion.
Yeah.
So they'll be, just, not, it's your presentation, but just, just so you understand, then we'll also, I think the odor, we haven't done yet.
Right.
We haven't approved yet, so you'll see that in the capital, capital article being approved as capital, but this will still be the funding source for it.
Right.
So we'll list it.
Yeah, yeah, because it clearly says that both, both approved and not approved yet. So, yeah, that's fine. I get it.
Okay.
I think everybody gets that, right?
Yeah, we could just-
And I just, if I could add one more thing, with this SRF application, it's a little bit of a bear of an application to put together. It's usually several inches thick, and the DEP makes us get all sorts of forms signed. There are forms that the town will need to sign. This application is due on October 15th. We can submit it electronically. It was a little hectic with the pandemic and the timing of everything, so we, we're able to communicate with DEP. They have relaxed the, the requirement to have complete design plans and specifications. We can submit that as an amendment to the application somewhere in the February, March, which is great. It gives us a few months to work on that. I believe I did include, there was two forms that the Board of Selectmen need to sign, and they basically give, it acknowledges the town administrator can be the signatory for the town. That's the gist of it. Now, I did email those. I can offer that, if you'd like, we can probably have a pretty close PDF of a whole application for the next meeting if the board would like to see that application before they sign anything. I think that's October 6th, but by October 15th, we do need to try to get all these forms completed and signed.
We, we do have the two forms, the authority to file and the certifying authority to file both signing pieces of paper. I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So your firm is applying for the grants?
So it's the town, the town would be applying for the application, the loan application. We're assisting the town with developing that application.
You're writing the grant applications on behalf of the town?
Correct.
Okay. One of my peers said that we had been chasing this rabbit since 2008. Certainly, the issue of odor has been an issue for many years. So I guess my question is, presume we go ahead with this, presume everything gets approved, presume everything gets bonded, presume everything gets built. Are we done? Or, or is the fact that the capacity of the sewer plant itself going to become an issue?
So very, very good questions. Let me start with the odors. So the main issue now is that you have two roughly one-acre ponds of raw wastewater. It is very challenging to hide. If those are left open- If those are left open, we can, there's all sorts of techniques you can do to minimize it, but there's always going to be an odor. So this, this is why we're looking at a much more costly, but a much more effective option. If you can cover that and capture the air and focus it and treat it, something, whether it's through a filter or some type of technology, you can dramatically reduce it. I will never say that we will eliminate odors. It's a wastewater treatment plant. It gets thousands and thousands of households of raw sewage coming in, so there will always be odors there. But we can greatly reduce those odors. And even what we're doing now with these additional equalization basins is we're doing, we're setting them up so you can do what we call midstream equalization. We can pull off the clarifier, so it's partially treated water. We don't, in the event of a, of a high, high rain or weather event, we can do midstream. So, so that should help out, too. But the fact that you always have these two wide-open acres of raw sewage is, is the generation of these.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Because I know a lot of people who complain about this a lot. Are there going to be more than those two basins?
We're building two more.
You're building two more?
Correct.
Are they just plain overflow, overflow, or are they going to be?
Overflow is a very good term for it. Yes, it's a surplus.
That was a terrible pun, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a.
That was really bad.
Yeah, but he, what he's trying to say, though, is they can take them off the clarifier in some cases, and when you take it off the clarifier, then it's already partially treated, so the odor would be a lot less than putting raw sewage in there.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is that, that there will be four. Two of them will always be in service and two of them will be, oh my gosh, it's going to rain and we're going to have 15 feet of water coming down and blah, blah, blah. Those then go online?
Correct.
Do you ever rotate the two that are there out to, I don't know, do you clean these things? So that, that the two brand-new ones become the, the ones that receive the daily effluent or whatever, and the two that are there right now get scrubbed and cleaned out and become the overflow ones? Is there like a rotating way of doing that, or is that not part of what makes sense?
That comes more into the operations of a plant, whereas, you know, design engineers, we design things and then, you know, the plant operates it. But the way we've designed this, yes, it does give you the ability to divert raw wastewater into these new basins if you need to. So for example, if there was a hurricane forecaster, you get some tremendous rain event and you want that ability to pass through so you don't overwhelm all your tanks and treatments and processes, you have that ability. If we don't, now again, that's not expected to happen very frequently.
That's, that's really not answering my question. In other words, does it, does it have to go through those first two to get to the second two?
No.
It does have to.
It pulls off the clarifier, so it would go now.
So, so the, so the, yeah, your, your question is, will the, could the new basin serve kind of as a primary means of storing?
That's correct.
The raw wastewater? The answer is, is that's not how they're currently, that's not for raw wastewater. It's a, that's an overflow.
Midstream equalization.
Yeah, so they're an overflow for raw wastewater, but they're a primary means of storing midstream.
Okay, I'm just a.
Yep.
Regular human being.
Yep.
And if I have four holes in the ground and I use two of them regularly, but I have two more empty ones, doesn't it make sense to be able to rotate them so that they get cleaned and, and used so that, so that these?
Judy, I think we should let them design the plant.
I'm, I'm asking that question.
No, I can comment on that.
If you need a question answered, we have two basins now that are off, and we rotate them and we clean them.
Okay.
As part of the process.
Right.
It's pretty labor-intensive, but it's done. The guys have to physically climb in there with hoses and wash down the sump. And, and then we put that offline, let it dry, we wash it down, and then we run this one, then we flop them on a weekly basis. And so we do that now. The two additional ones is to direct, because we have clarifiers and sand filters that were antiquated the day they were built, CDM was very sure to tell us the day the plant was built that it was already at capacity. And so those things, we have to divert those, and that's what the new basins afford, to take care of the secondary, and it's specific for the secondary. They are going to add a connection if we get a major wet weather event that we've been experiencing more and more each year, so we have the capacity to fill all if we had to in a major wet weather event.
Thank you. That clarifies what.
Thank you, thank you.
That clarifies what I was trying to get at. Mr. Campana, thank you.
Anything else?
No. I just, I think the, the first three were, were pretty much, you already ran through them at previous presentations, and I guess on the odor control, you just, you don't know what you're going to do yet. It's a big question, Mike. You have some ideas, but?
We do.
We did. And so the, the ultimate is to cover everything. Now, you've got two major expanses, and the difficulty is to put support that'll handle wind and snow and all the loading with the expanse. We looked into it.
Yeah.
And it can be quite costly. That's why we thought maybe if we, 250,000 gallons is peak flow per day, and the basins are designed for peak flow. So we have 250,000 gallons. We thought that maybe we could design a basin, cover it, enclose it, and put odor control for the 250,000 that we do regularly. That was the design. So we have to look at those costs and make a final decision.
Well, we should do something. I just, you know.
Thanks.
Al?
I don't think there's any way really to eliminate all odor. To say that we're going to get rid of all odor is really, it's not a fair statement to anybody. If you go down to Hyannis, I go down, usually during the summer, we have the concerts down there, and you go right by the backside of Hyannis, and you go right by the water pollution control facility. You know within about 1,000 feet when you're getting there and 1,000 feet after you leave there. And that's a very enclosed system. That's probably the least one I've ever been to that you can barely smell. But there'll always be some odor. It depends on the wind, et cetera. So to say that we're going to eliminate the odor would, would be giving the residents a false security. But to say we're going to mitigate the odor as much as is humanly possible with the techniques that are available, I think is, is what our goal should be.
That's a great point. It's about mitigating for quality of life. You can't, in any facility throughout the world, you can't eliminate odors by the nature of what we, what we do. So I agree with that.
Who, who are you speaking to?
Want me to go closer?
Yeah.
Is it better? I don't.
Is it on?
I don't know.
Green light?
Lights, it's green.
Yep.
You've got to pull it close enough to eat it.
It was just a little far away, I think.
Sorry about that. But, but odors in any plant are going to be there because you have primary, secondary, and different types of odors. One of the questions we ask, and it aggravates people, is what are you smelling? Does it smell like fish? Does it smell like rotten eggs? What's it smell like? Because each part of the facility gives off its own distinct odor. So that's why we try to attack that specific odor. But odors in what we do, wastewater, is what it is. There's no other way I can sugarcoat it. If you make croutons, you can smell the garlic. If you make chocolate, you can smell the chocolate. We process waste. It's just, it's just the nature of the beast. And our job is to mitigate, to give people a quality of life.
Maybe you should start making, making sugar then of some kind.
Well, we'd like.
Candy of some kind, maybe that'll help you.
We could, we would, for sure.
We have a chocolatier in town.
Okay, anything else?
I just have one other question.
Sure.
I sort of snuck in five questions and you got away with answering two. What about the capacity, when these projects are all done? Where do we stand in terms of where can we go from there?
Sure, sure. So we do have a contract right now that we've authorized to do a complete plant evaluation, which includes a detailed look at the flows, the capacity remaining, what other systems in the plant may be undersized, and then additional concerns moving on that. So at the next sewer commissioners' meeting, we are going to give a presentation on the remaining flow at the treatment facility. I try to be very respectful of the chain of command, so I always try to report first to the WPCF superintendent, then to the sewer commissioners, town administrator, then to the board. Every time I have broken that in the past, someone gets very mad at me, so I try to stick to the, the chain of command. But we are at the next meeting, so there is going to be a discussion about the flows, and you are getting close to capacity. This plant is unique because it can design and treat up to 2 million gallons a day, but your discharge permit is for 1.56. Normally, those numbers are the same. In this case, you're permitted to discharge less than what the treatment facility can actually treat. So we are getting close to that 1.56 and would like to present our findings to the, to the sewer commissioners at the next meeting. But then beyond that, absolutely, the, the next biggest priority we'd see is getting additional discharge capacity. How do you do that? There's several different mechanisms that can be looked at and evaluated. We do have a contract now to evaluate future groundwater discharge sites. There's been a lot of discussion about a shared site potentially with the Public Safety Complex that's off Minut Road. We are potentially looking at grounds right next to the treatment facility and then a, a third parcel. So that's the other priority, is since we are getting close to our capacity, where do we go from there? What do we do? What's the alternative that meets the town's best, that's in the best interest for the town?
And just to follow up on that, presume that, I don't know, 15% of what goes into the system is INI, okay? If you cure that problem, which I believe you're in the process of doing by relining, does, what effect does that have on the capacity?
It's, it's a challenging problem. Every municipal sewer system deals with INI. A lot of times when you treat or seal one pipe that has a lot of cracks and INI, it pushes that problem to somewhere else. You know, that water follows the path of least resistance. So INI, it's, and this is a terribly frustrating topic to talk about because you're treating clean water. I get it. It's a lot coming from sump pumps, and yes, it's taking up your capacity that you're, you're, you know, paying for it to design and treat. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so this is something that I'm glad you, was my next thing to talk about, really, is we as selectmen have the ability to, that the sewer commissioners don't have to deal with some of these issues legally.
Yep.
And we're going to have to do that. Enough is enough about this because we probably have, am I, I'm probably close, 500,000 gallons of INI from sump pumps?
At certain times, the air absolutely.
Okay, so half a million gallons?
A day?
A day?
A day.
A day? So we're talking about a huge amount. Now, unfortunately, what would have been a better deal, you go over at Weeby Annec, I happen to think of, right over there, not Weeby Annec, you know.
Swift.
In, in, no, Indy.
I'm not telling you where you are.
No, no, I'm on, I'm near Gateway there, Gateway Restaurant.
Yeah.
Weeby Annec, I guess it's Weeby Annec. Okay. So over at Weeby Annec, they have, just about everybody over there pumps from their basement. Almost everybody does. There's water, there's water table there, they're all pumping. And when we hooked everybody up to sewer, we took away their septic tanks and their leach fields that could have been very helpful. But the DEP said to us, well, you've got to close them down properly, which means filling them with sand and, you know, whatever. So they just simply took and hooked them up to their, to the sewer pipe because they were going in there anyway. Right? So now they're going in the sewer pipe instead of into the system that they were using. There were some who were putting them out on the ground, and of course, we went out and yelled at them about that because now they've got ice on the street in the wintertime. So that's a bad, you're not supposed to do that either, discharge on a public way. So we, we sort of locked them into a place, and now we've got them to the point where they are just putting it into the sewer system. And nobody's going to tell you, hey, we're putting it in the sewer system. Okay? They're not going to tell you that because they, everybody knows they're not supposed to be doing it. But that's where we as selectmen and town administration are going to have to do something. We're going to have to come up with a plan that resolves this issue. One of it may be, somebody might have to have, we might have to give them some ability to be able to put some kind of a leach field in their yard, to be able to put the, put it in there so they take it out of our system. Because 500,000 gallons of flow is a heck of a lot of flow. You know how much we could connect in this town with another 500,000 gallons of sewer per day? It'd be a lot, that's for sure. A lot of places and a lot of our, especially our commercial areas, which we're going to need, as we all know, as time goes on, the more and more we're going to need in our commercial areas. You know, maybe, maybe the water pollution control facility could have some grants for people to, to put in these dry wells or wells to accept the, the.
Gray water.
No, just know the water they're pumping out of the solid. That's gray water.
Gray water.
That's considered gray water, basically. Whatever you want to call it. It's actually fresh water. Hold on a minute, I got, that's my time here, Patrick. So, you know, maybe you can do that and come up with some grant program to help the people with the cost of providing, you know, a place to put it. Instead of just, you know, we go around this all the time, all the time, and nothing gets done. It's hard to enforce. You go down, you find the people, so maybe we need to look at, at a different way to address it.
I agree. Bottom line with everything is economics, right? We all know economics is a decisive factor in all the decisions we make. And one of the things you tell a homeowner to get it out, they have to spend the money to get it out. And so to your point, the DEP is beginning to offer programs that are offering studying and grant money to do some of these things.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe.
That money is starting to come in, and when it comes in, we'll definitely apply.
And maybe, maybe we can do something. I think we have a pretty good kitty. You do, not we. Maybe you can come up with a program, you know? It's food for thought.
We have a kitty, but I want to say that the kitty has spoken for. It's like when I look at my assets liabilities.
Yeah, we just.
And I say, okay, I have money, but what I, what's I'm liable for, I have no money. But to your point.
No, right.
We could probably fund some things or find some ways.
But we just, we just found $3 million.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That you lost. No, you did, right? Because you're going to bundle it into a, a bond and a long-term loan, so you just gain that money back in your kitty. So anyhow, that's for another discussion, another day. You know, he's, he's right.
It's just a find out.
If we come up with a solution for them and make it easier, but in the same instance, it's illegal.
Yeah.
You can't do it, it's illegal. And we, we have, we have been working with this for way too long now in trying to come up with an approach. Everybody seems too afraid to get involved, go to courts, do whatever's required. And I think that we need to take that on as a board, not you guys, to figure out how we're going to make that work.
It's a state issue, so there are some towns that have dealt with it.
Absolutely.
There's some towns that have it, but it's a state issue. It's for everybody, so some researches to what others are doing may be, you know, a good thing, but it is an issue, state, and I'm sure other states are having the issue too. And it's illegal at all levels, local, state, and federal, but it's a tough enforcement. It's a very tough enforcement. We had talked about the MSF program, and as a town, you have to spend tons of money to do a lot of treatment of, of stormwater. a lot of treatment of stormwater, there may be an opportunity to migrate this to stormwater by putting some pipes in that they can connect to, that can take to the stormwater that's going to be treated. So, there's a lot of things in the works and the DEP has got a program now to help you design that. They're not funding, but to help you design that, so it's something else we can look at. But there's a lot of opportunities, but the bottom line is, it's economics. And folks, when you tell them to spend another $3,000 or $5,000 to get it out, it's a challenge to a lot of people.
Let me just say one more thing. So, the other possibility right now, we don't have any, we're running out of being able to put it into the river, okay? So, we're running out of space there. So, and it doesn't look like right now we're going to be able to get that line down to the canal, okay? So, that's probably not going to happen for quite a while. So, the other thing is to have some subsurface disposal underneath someplace, whatever, and put it in the ground. Now, there's a problem inherent with that. The problem inherent with that is, is the cost is extremely high. First, you put it in the ground, it might last 20 years, 25 if you're lucky. If you take care of it and you handle it exactly right, if not, then you've got to rip it out and replace it and start over again because that's just how it is. I mean, let's face it, it's a costly way to do it. It's a very serious cost. But if we can take 500,000 gallons back and it costs us some money to go get it, it might cost us a lot less than it is to put 500,000 gallons into the ground, which is what we're talking about.
I just, I'm not sure, I just want to make sure, if we stop 500,000 gallons of sump pump, we're going to instantly get 500,000 gallons of capacity?
No, that's a misconception. And I want to say that 500,000 gallons that we get per day is wet weather events. So, what happens, we have a wet weather event, so it stops raining for three to four days after those sump pumps are pumping like crazy, which brings quite a bit of flow to the plant. And so, that is a real number. And so, at those particular times of the year, it puts us out of permit. It puts us, we're discharging greater than what our peak flows are designed to handle in our weather, the hourly and daily. So, to answer your question, it's not like we're going to have the 500,000 gallons forever. We may have a portion of it because the engineers have probably spread that over a year and so, okay, this is a real number that you could actually use. And I don't know what that's going to be, that I have to analyze that to be sure.
Well, just, I know you're saying that those sump pumps are pumping more during the rain events. That's correct. But they're also pumping all the time.
Well, there's some that will, because we're still seeing some now, so there are some that...
Yeah, I mean, because I know...
They're in the water table.
It has to be an all-time low.
Been in some of those places.
Really low.
Yeah, right now, it's at a low. You're absolutely right. It's been lowest in a long time, so you're right. They're pumping less water now than they would have been, but I imagine you're seeing that at the plant, too.
Well, it's weird you say that because our flows are pretty close to steady. I mean, we're averaging a million gallons a day.
Really?
So, I don't know where it's coming from. I'm thinking that people are home now using more water.
Oh, maybe, that could be true, too, because everybody is kind of locked at home.
Everybody's locked out and people are working at home, so water's coming out.
Yeah, so it's staying the same, yeah. So, they're using real water now, real stuff. But yeah, but that's absolutely the case. Water, I mean, I've been, you know, obviously in many houses with sump pumps for one reason or another, whether I'm doing a septic or whatever, and you see them go on and off all the time. And it's not raining out, there's nothing going on outside, but they need to take that water out from under the foundation and move it. And it's going, I mean, it just is. And so, you're getting it, you know, less than when it's actually raining and pouring, but you're still getting some of it.
And that's the numbers engineers will calculate.
Exactly. And that's where you've got to get a calculation basis. But still, the point is that we could gain a bunch of gallons, even if you gained half of them, that's 250,000, so.
One very quick item to add, and we'd be happy to look at this, is that, you know, obviously we'd look back and review the past INI reports, but we do have the water use information for all the sewer parcels, so we can look at that over the course of a year. You take the water use, you multiply it by a factor of either .8 or .9, because the majority of water that comes into a home ends up going out as gray water or wastewater. So, we can very easily see what the water use is and we can compare that to what the flows at the plant are. You deduct the water use from the flows after you convert it to wastewater, that will give you, it won't give you like that peak five, you know, the highest number, but it will give you an average gallon per day of INI per year. And that's probably a helpful number to have, so we'd be more than happy to look at that.
That's how we determine sewage species. We've got a gallon of water coming in and three gallons coming out. You knew there was a problem.
Easy enough to figure it out.
Okay, anything else?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, my God.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to explain what the motions are going to be. The first one is the authority to file. Board of Selectmen's signature is going to authorize and acknowledge that the WPCF improvements are in the public interest and necessary to protect public health. Board of Selectmen's signatures also state that the town administrator is authorized to act as representative of the applicant, the town of Wareham, to file, sign, fore, accept, and take whatever action is necessary for the project and the SRF application. The authority to file states that the loan, if awarded, shall be used for construction activities and that the applicant agrees to pay the applicant's share of the project costs. I move that we sign the authority to file form.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
This comes out of the wastewater treatment plant enterprise fund, correct? Payments?
All our parts, yes, and the payment of debt will come out of the town. Yes, all the debt will be paid out of the enterprise and the engineering fees also.
Okay, the second one is certifying the authority to file. This document that I'm going to move certifies that the Board of Selectmen voted to authorize the town administrator to act on behalf of the applicant, the town of Wareham, for the WPCF improvements fiscal year 2021. The document should include the date of the vote by the Board of Selectmen, which it would. So, I move to sign the certifying authority to file.
Second.
Alan was raising his hand. Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0 on that.
Thank you.
And I guess that takes care of the immediate business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You'll be working with Derek and the motion for town meeting and then...
At some point, we'll be back in some form to give, I think, numbers, something maybe a little more concrete on the odor elimination before town meeting, right?
Absolutely. And Derek, I want to point out that the authorization for nine, if there's less than, then we can still clarify that at the actual borrowing and signing of the documents. So, we'll get a hotter number.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, you were quiet tonight.
He's pretty noisy, that guy, isn't he? He's a good man.
I can give you a photocopy of it in two minutes.
That'd be great, if you could, yeah.
Yeah, I can, as soon as it's signed.
I just signed an appointment here.
Russ, do you care to tell interesting stories while we're waiting with this dead air?
Is there any sort of topic you'd like to hear? Bouncing at bars for eight years? I can juggle things if you'd like.
You were a bouncer.
Save that for the next video.
Bob, the long, the short was, I don't believe it's for public airways, the stories.
Not really.
Okay, we're going to jump down and do the refuse update while Judy is off making copies.
We have a...
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I think we've got a meeting tomorrow. I know we've been, I need to meet up with, or we don't, I guess.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, hopefully you and I can get together if you can figure out your schedule.
Yep.
We're always flexible here, right? And unfortunately, Carver is having a selectmen's meeting at 9:00 AM. They do, they try to focus on certain business, you know, they have the regular meeting, then the off weekday. So, they're trying to do it during the day because it works out for one of the members. Unfortunately, so we're going to meet and discuss some things. Derek put together some, has come up with a concept and you're kind of bundling costs and whatnot for curbside and transfer station and/or just transfer station. And also some, I think he garnered some language from another town on the process, but would that be part of the bylaws?
Yeah, it's part of the bylaw. I handed that out last week. If anybody, if you can look through it, it was very half-baked, as you probably saw. We're trying to include, so any suggestions? After I get any of the feedback, I'll obviously, we'll go through it again. I think Jim and I, that'd be a good document for he and I to go through.
Yeah, so hopefully we can do a little of that. I always like things in Word format ever, so I can highlight and...
Gotcha.
So, a hard copy's good, but when you get it, you know, if you send it to something in Word, PDF doesn't help me, I don't have a PDF editor, but however you have it, just so I can highlight and... So, yeah, we're moving forward, we'll see what happens. There's a lot of... It's very interesting, let's put it that way.
Love moving parts.
And just the process of getting through committee and making sure that everything is done properly so that you didn't leave something open to...
Yep, future problems are...
Interpretation.
Interpretation and, you know, responsibility shirking and all that good stuff.
Yeah, best-laid plans and all of a sudden, whoa, wait a minute.
There sure are a lot of clever people out there.
Oh, yeah. So, there we are, thank you.
I hope you're catching every single one of them.
We good now?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll jump up to the COVID-19 update.
I know Alan wanted to speak to that.
Yep.
Do you have anything on yours?
I was, I had some of the same things as you, I think, so that's...
We didn't have our usual weekly LGAC meeting today. Governor did speak at about 1:30 this afternoon and Lieutenant Governor. And basically, happened what I expected, they're now moving to anyone who is in the white or green area, we're going to what they call step two of phase three. And I'm just going to read this because it's not fully vetted out. I think in the next couple of days it'll be a lot clearer. As of Monday, of course, the restaurants were able to open up their bars somewhat as long as they were serving food and spacing. And the restaurant's capacity was also increased as far as inside to 10 people a table. So, let me just read this through and hopefully the public will have some idea because it affects Halloween, I believe, also. So, this will be effective on October 5th, which I believe is next Monday. Communities designated as red remain in step one of phase three. Baker announced that revised gathering orders and industry-specific guidance and protocols for a range of phase one, two, and three businesses are being updated. In lower-risk communities, effective October 5th, the following sectors will be eligible to reopen with restrictions. Indoor performance venues will be permitted to open with a 50% capacity with a maximum of 250 people. Outdoor performance venues' capacity will increase to 50% with a maximum of 250 people. For arcades and indoor and outdoor recreation business, additional step-two activities like trampolines, obstacle courses, roller rinks, and laser tag will be permitted to open and capacity will be increased to 50%. Fitting rooms will be permitted to open in all types of retail stores, gyms, museums, libraries, driving and flight schools will be permitted to increase their capacity to 50%. If a community drops into the red category, it will need to move back to step one, phase three. Until it is out of the red category, and in order to do that, it has to have three consecutive Department of Public Health weekly reports showing that. Communities have the option to proceed more slowly into step two if they choose, consistent with the administration position that cities and towns can decide to be more restrictive than the statewide rules during the opening process, though they cannot opt to reopen more aggressively than the state's orders and guidance. The limit for indoor gatherings remains at a maximum of 25 people for all communities. Outdoor gatherings at private residences and back, private backyards will remain at a maximum of 50 for people of all communities. Outdoor gatherings at event venues and in public settings will have a limit of 50 people in step-one communities and a limit of 100 people in lower-risk step-two communities, which this might help with some of the Halloween parties, per se, that people put on. Outdoor gatherings, during a press briefing, Governor Baker said that the orders governing situations where there isn't applicable sector-specific guidance, in other words, businesses such as restaurants and retail stores operating in a capacity limit set in the guidance for those activities, not the gathering orders. The Department of Public Health survey basically has the impact and that's really what it is. But again, it's not really clear completely because one of the things was mentioned, large stadium events, obviously like the Patriots, et cetera, still are not allowed for, you know, stuff like that, they can't reopen them with, you know, a couple thousand people.
Right, large entertainment venues because you've got the 250 cap.
Yep. So, I would ask people over the next couple of days to check and see what the state is releasing for information, the Department of Public Health will have it. You can also go into the COVID-19 State of Massachusetts website and there should be better detail. The details today were a little fuzzy, to say the least. Thank you.
And I think we've been asked, well, is a town going to ban Halloween or not?
Yep.
And I think that's, yeah, that's not an accurate question, if you will, it's not something we really, really do, but to give you an idea of what's going to happen greater than 31 days from now in the situation, I don't think we can give you a reliable answer. We've had, we have five active cases in town, but we've had a total of 14 cases in September. That could spike given anything. You know, and people are concerned about their children and it's, I'm not one to give, you know, child-rearing advice. We have two young children, but what we've been doing is talking to them about these things, talking to them about Halloween, saying, hey, guys, we don't know what's going to happen, but it's going to be different. Halloween's going to be different this year, so let's just expect that and whatever happens, we're going to have a great time. And I think that needs to be the message instead of driving insecurities into the kids. Let's just let them know, be honest, our kids are smart, our kids are resilient, and you want to know what? At the end of the day, they're going to enjoy some candy.
Well, as an example, I was at the YMCA this morning and we were talking just about what they're going to do for the Halloween party they do every year. And as of right now, they're probably going to have people come in under a timeframe, come in, get their gift or treat, and immediately go right back out because there's no way they can plan on having 150, whatever, people coming in and out altogether.
Yep.
But I think it's up to the individual parents because at the end of the day, it's their call. They have to stay within the rules and we can't really say yes or no completely because they have certain guidelines now they can follow. But hopefully people will be conservative because I'm not worried so much about the kids as the kids picking it up and giving it to parents and grandparents. Because I believe, and I think the numbers still hold out, that 90% of the deaths in the United States is 55 and older. So, I'm not in a very good place.
83, 83 and older.
No trick-or-treating for you.
You know, 10 years ago, 55 sounded a lot older to me.
It did back then because people lived to 80 and 90 easily. It's kind of a shame.
On the back nine.
That's it.
Jim?
It's, you know, I think Derek kind of covered it nicely and, you know, the individuals who give out candy, they might just say, you know, I'm not doing it. All you need is one person who's ill and, you know, and if they're giving out candy or whatever and...
Spread it everywhere.
Yeah, so it's an individual choice at this point in time. I don't know if the state will come out with guidelines and take the pressure off the local towns and...
We're still a week or two away from that.
Yeah.
Yeah, their guidelines right now are wear a mask, wash your hands, if you feel ill, don't participate. So...
That's good advice all around for everything, not just Halloween.
Yeah, if you go into like 7-Eleven and stuff now, you can go up to their, you know, soda dispensers and stuff and self-serve, but there's basically hand sanitizer there. You can't bring your own mug or your own cup and there's a whole process and don't even do that right now and that just changed on Monday as well. So, it's tight, they're not making it easy.
Yeah, Cumberland Farms 99 cent coffees are back.
Yes, it is. That's it for me.
Okay, well, anything else for that? No? Let's jump down here.
Ratify of hiring?
Yeah, ratify the hiring.
The town has made a conditional offer to Eva Golden for the position of Natural Resources Officer. I would ask that we ratify the hiring.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, who seconded?
Patrick.
Patrick, seconded by Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Just quick, I went over and spoke with Doreen and had a pretty good pool of candidates, a large pool, and I want to thank them, they're doing a nice job, I appreciate it. And I'm kind of learning what the process and how they do things and it's nice to see. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Recommendations votes for the 2020 Annual Fall Town Meeting warrant, some of these, I'm going to invite people to the meeting next week. So, for example, I think if there's any questions for planning, we should have Ken available. I don't know who from the charter review group intends to present.
The answers to any questions you have are right here, I believe, but if it's okay with you, I will answer the questions.
That's fine, if we want to get going on this. We'll just go through the articles, just run down the list.
Well, we put them all on already, right?
Yeah, we put them all on, these are just the recommendation votes.
So, are we going to start recommending votes? I don't know there's that many we can do.
Yeah, we can, we can do the...
We can do some.
We can do the free cash, we can prior year's bills, we can do the PEG.
Yeah, I've got the list here. Capital plan isn't ready yet, correct? Transfer free cash is nope.
No, I don't have anything for you.
Okay. Don't, we don't know what the prior year bills are.
None so far.
Come in.
None so far.
Good. PEG access receipts, we know what that is, that's our, we have to pay WCTV every six months.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Motion to recommend by Patrick, seconded by Judy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Union contracts, we don't have yet. Gifts of land, what about both of those?
Move to accept, move to second. Move to rec, second.
Okay, both of them?
Yes.
Okay, move to recommend, both by Patrick, seconded by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
I abstain on that one.
You're abstaining on one or the other?
Both.
You're going to abstain on both. Okay, so 4-0-1, okay, 4-0-1. Signed bylaw, I think we should hold off. Drive-throughs should hold off. Transfer of Deacon School?
Move to recommend.
Transfer? Oh, they, yes, move to recommend, second.
Okay. And again, this is just to transfer it from the school committee's control to the Board of Selectmen's control.
When it's no longer a school.
When it's no longer being used as a school.
Right.
Yeah, they made that clear.
Hmm?
They clarified that in the article.
Yeah, they did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. McKinney-Vento, that's just a semi-annual appropriation. Move to recommend by Patrick, seconded by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
No.
4-1-0.
You voted no to put it on, too, right? Remember, right? Did you vote no to put it, not put it on yet?
Okay, 4-1-0. Okay. Marijuana testing lab, we'll wait. Residential use definitions, we'll wait. Harbor services appropriation, we know what the dollar amounts are.
Do we have the dollar amounts?
Yeah, we, it was in, it was in the article.
Yeah.
I move it.
Are those the correct ones, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yeah, you should, do you have the copy in front of you? Let me see the amended article.
Do you have the warrant there?
I, I don't have a warrant here.
It's fine, as long as he knows whether the correct ones are.
Hmm? Do you have the warrant booted up?
I just wanted to make sure you had the explanations on them.
No, I don't.
No.
You know, um, do you know, do you know what, which boat we're replacing the engines on?
It's the main boat. I don't know the exact, I don't know which, whether that is a specific name, but it's, it's their main, main boat that they utilize, the, the one that has the...
Twenty-seven-foot whaler. Main one, I think it's a 27-foot whaler. It's got two 300 horsepower Mercury...
Yeah, this is to replace 2010 300 horsepower.
Those motors are completely worn out, Jim. What was it, like 40? How much is it?
We're estimating the, um...
Like 20 grand a piece, aren't they? More than that.
Yeah, and we, we estimate for about the, could, could run us all together 60 grand, because we're also going to equip and install and everything, so we're covering the total costs of that.
That's a discount also. Those motors with, with throttle controls and everything are running about $40,000 each now.
Yeah, thousand, thousand dollars.
They Mercury Verados? Yeah, Mercury Verado Supercharged. Big money. Yamaha's is just as expensive.
Okay, do we...
I made a motion to recommend.
Second.
Motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Wareham Village 1 rezoning will hold off. Let's see, community preservation, that's just to pay off the loan.
Move number 16, the tramontanal remediation.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Same with the fund reserves, these are the semi-annual allocations.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, on, on the previous article, just, just a question on, we're paying the interest in the principal, correct?
Yes.
Principal and interest, but there's two, there's two on there. It's the short term and long term. You're paying the long term for the permanently financed portion. It hasn't been completely done, so you still have a band for the rest of it. And the reason why we permanently finance the other portion of it was it was large enough when we were going out for the school bond to include it with that to get the best possible rate.
That was just for the remediation.
Correct, so, and we still, so the whole 1.4, I'm just going to use the 1.4 million, has not been totally spent on there. Most of it, the majority, has been spent, and we're still in the, we're still, whatever that sort of phase is, checking, double-checking, make sure everything's...
And what bills will be coming in on it?
Yeah, so you've still got a little bit. So that's why you've got a large permanently financed portion, and then there's still a band for what's been paid out and for the next couple bills until that's all done. Once that's closed out, we'll permanently finance the rest of that portion as well.
Right, okay, and, you know, I just, I see the interest in the principles, same thing on the dock.
Yeah, the dock has been, um, the dock's all done, that's squared away, there should be the, these are the final payments. Should be three payments all to, all together, I think, because we've already made at least two. I'll double-check on that, though.
All right, thanks. I just, you know, I see those numbers coming up, and I hate seeing interest and...
Yeah.
My short-term stress, especially.
Yeah.
Thank you.
CPC Fund Reserves, we, we had the motion from Judy, and the, the, seconded by Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
We already did that.
I didn't call for a vote yet. WPCF State Revolving Fund, are we prepared to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Since we're applying for it, I guess we better vote for it. Okay, move to recommend by Patrick, seconded by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay. You want to do the Charter tonight?
Sure, do you want to do...
Up to you.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay. Well, I'll let you see...
Unless you would prefer, unless the board would prefer somebody who is, does not have undue influence to explain it.
I don't have a problem.
I don't either.
Thank you.
All right, talk away.
Okay, Chart 1 is, as explained on the documents at, on file on the website, on file with the town clerk, and on file under the Charter Review Group, is the article that asks for changes or recommends changes to spelling, capitalization, punctuation, word order. Presentation issues like, instead of having a run-on paragraph, there will be bullet items so that the document is easier to read. It removes the bold-faced portions of the Charter, which technically are not part of the Charter, to an appendix. It removes the two previous introductions and minority and majority reports to appendices, and technically, they were not part of the Charter. So that the Charter itself will be, I think it's 36 pages long, and will have those documents as appendices and not clutter up the presentation. The committee felt very strongly that the document should be clear, concise, readable, and understandable. And all of the changes recommended on Chart 1 do that.
Questions? On the board?
Move to recommend.
Eva, quick?
Second. One quick question. The name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, is that part of the changes in the section?
Yes, sir. The recommendation throughout the Charter is to use gender-neutral language insofar as is possible, so...
Just want Patrick to understand that.
Yeah, so instead of saying Board of Selectmen, it will say...
I know you knew that. Thanks, though.
Select Board. Instead of saying he, it will say he or she. Instead of using a, a gender-specific title, we would use, for instance, the Town Administrator shall, as opposed to he shall, okay? So it's very, very much up to date in common and accepted usage for language.
Just so the board knows also, I've reached out to the Mass Selectmen's Association to reach out to the Mass Municipal Association to see if we can get the State of Massachusetts, House, and Senate to agree to rewrite all the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Charter, et cetera, and change the language to neutral.
Can you say that again, because I can't hear you, Alan. I'm sorry.
We're basically looking to change the Mass General Laws into what we call a neutral.
Gender-neutral.
Gender.
Thank you.
As I, as I explained before, when all this stuff was written, women couldn't vote, et cetera, so men were the only thing that was. That's why it was written the way it was.
I don't have a problem with making things gender-neutral, like saying Town Administrator, any of that. Never had any trouble with any of that. My problem is that the word "selectmen" has nothing to do with men. It has to do with man in general and not anything to do with a gender.
I don't care.
The words that they want to replace this with has the word "man" in it anyway, so it's...
No, it says Select Board.
No, I'm talking about Select Board, but they want to call it human, humankind?
No.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, that's one of the things, right? Humankind, is it not?
We did not use that in the Charter.
No, they don't use it, though.
No, it's not in our Charter, but it's, it's one of the things they want to do.
I think Patrick's speaking globally.
Yeah.
Yeah, globally, there is a movement to...
Make it humankind, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, the word man, men is still in there, is it not? Yeah, okay. But, I mean, the whole thing is ridiculous to me. Maybe I'm old-school, but, you know, a dinosaur is a dinosaur, and I continue to, to be a dinosaur whether I like, whether I like it or not.
There you go.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right, let's pry him off the third rail. Do we have a motion and a second? I thought I heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. The next portion, because I know for a fact that there may be some differing opinions on this board, is broken out into nine subcategories on the warrant.
That's correct, and I...
Was done also in consultation with the town moderator, because that would make it easier for her to divide the question at town meeting instead of having a free-for-all over it, so...
And I have prepared for you an explanation of the different sections of the Charter, which are considered to be substantive changes. Chart 2, also on file with the town clerk, also on file on the website, also on file under the Charter Review portion of the website. So, not in any particular order, but if you would like me to continue, the first one of the substantive changes is that we deleted, doesn't say that on this one. We deleted the term newspaper because nowhere in the Charter is a newspaper referred to any longer, and we added, or we recommended adding, the words department head, facilities, fixture, and media, because those, in fact, are in use in the Charter. I apologize, it doesn't say, the one on file does say that the newspaper has been removed for, and the term is media now, recommendation. The second one, the transitional provisions.
Well, as, as we go through them, why don't we just vote?
Yeah, okay.
You know, um...
Jim?
I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on the second part tonight.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, we can wait.
I mean, it's up to you. I've, I've gone through, I don't know, 25 pages of it for a first read, then I got to look at the first section, the second section.
Yeah.
Do a second read. I, I know there's going to be some differences, but I'm just not ready to vote on each section, because I got part of it here.
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so however you want to do it.
We can do it next week.
Yeah, we can do it next week. This, I think you'll find that this is a very helpful way of gathering them.
Ready, you're not ready.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we'll...
Gets us home in time for the debate. Gets us home in time for the debate.
Oh, just wonderful. You want to throw up every hour? You go watch that.
I was going to say, I think we're doing a lot better job tonight than they're gonna. Alan?
We have an article, which is a citizen petition article. I just want to make a comment to the public. I spoke with Ralph Sacimone on Thursday on this particular article, as far as what they did in Falmouth and what happened about four months ago in Chelsea. Chelsea did theirs as a, they're a city, they did it as a, you know, basically, you know, council law itself. It's not a, a, it's not a, just a thing that's in the zoning or anything else, it's, it's done as an actual law. What Falmouth did was the same thing, they, even though they're a town, they did it as a bylaw. So what happened last Wednesday, I believe, Ralph said that they had, they made a ruling. They had 14 liquor stores from Chelsea come to the ABCC complain, you know, asking it to be thrown out. ABCC ruled on Wednesday last week that they supported the Chelsea actual rule what was passed. So Falmouth will be coming up, there's two other capes, two other towns in the Cape, and the article that's being presented to us all fall into the same category that's being presented as a bylaw. So if it passes a town meeting, it should get through the ABCC as well. I haven't heard from the AG's office, but right now, it looks like it might go through all the way.
And then it's up to the legislature.
And it's up to the legislature, but it's...
Ultimately, because it's, you know, they're the final approval authority for any Charter changes, so...
They're a baby.
Yeah.
It's really not a Charter change, it's an actual law, bylaw.
Oh, okay, that's right. I don't know what I was thinking, it's just going to be AG review?
AG review.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to make it through if they don't have...
And, and the question there is going to be, has the state, is the legal term is called cleared the field by establishing its own regulations and what can be sold in the Commonwealth and so on and so forth? And are we trespassing upon their territory? That's going to be the analysis when it goes up there.
I think it's going to put a lot of pressure on the state, because it's, we have basically five, and you're probably going to have 15 to 20 more before the, next year anyway, so it's going to put pressure to actually do something.
Yeah.
So we'll see. It's worth a shot.
Should have just put them in the bottle, Bill, they could have solved the whole problem.
Yeah.
No problem. Just put in the bottle, Bill, done.
But we'll invite the lead petitioner for that one.
I agree.
And the same on the rename the school.
Yep.
Do the same with that, invite the lead petitioner to come in and discuss that. The master plan?
I'll move to...
We all know, we all know what it is.
I'll move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, go ahead. Everybody seconded. Judy made the motion, Alan seconded.
Everybody likes it, okay. Any discussion? We all know what it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Let's see. Are we ready to do 22 and 23, the solid ones?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
But they're not ready.
No, they're not ready, yeah.
They're not ready.
No, that's why, that's why I'm trying to say we're going to meet tomorrow.
Exactly. They're going to wait until...
I'm just going through them all.
Until he gets it done, man.
That's right.
Trying to tick off the boxes here, you know, I got, I got Mr. Pigeon and the moderator yapping at my heels here to get it done, so...
Do what we can. I agree.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess we're, we're all set with that. We took out about half of it, so that was good.
At the table.
Yeah, well, I mean, when you're ready to recommend it, then we're ready to vote. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Yeah, there you go.
I like to see numbers and...
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Not just a big, open...
Big hole in the ground.
Hey, we'll get it to you.
Nothing in it?
Okay, anybody got any 48-hour business? Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Jim?
48-hour, no.
I do have a little, a little thing here. We, we got something from the town clerk today regarding a couple of gas stations. I'm not going to mention their names or their addresses, that haven't taken care of renewing their stool storage licenses, fuel storage licenses. And I'd like to send them a letter saying, you gotta, you gotta get this renewed, or you're going to face discipline on your license.
Absolutely. If not, show cause, remove their license, simple.
Okay, Alan?
We should make sure that one of those may or may not be the one that Sam bought a gas station on Cranbury Highway and moved the license so he could do cigarette sales onto Main Street Wareham.
Okay, we'll confirm.
It may be the reason, like, one of them didn't file, because it's no longer a gas station.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm it in the records.
I'm, I'll move that the chair be authorized to send the appropriate letters to the appropriate parties.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay, I will get that taken care of.
I saw that come through.
Yeah.
Town Administrator report?
No.
Just no? You're not, you...
I'm getting out of here tonight.
You don't want to do it, you're not willing to do it, or you have nothing to say?
He doesn't want to be here till 10 o'clock again.
Just no.
He has kids.
All right, liaison reports. I think Alan got a little bit of his out of the way.
Most of it.
Good.
Judy reminded me that we talked, actually, I talked about the Veterans Parade and Veterans Day. We said we were going to write a proclamation, so I need the chair to physically write a proclamation. Probably check with Mr. White, who's putting it all together.
Yeah.
Need that. On, last week on Wednesday, my usual Serp Ed Commission meeting, we brought some people in from Western Mass, from the school there as well, talking about solar sighting and removal of trees, et cetera. And the way things are working was very informative, and all 27 communities took away a lot of, you know, positive information. And I forwarded everything to the town here as well, with all the study groups, et cetera. And I forwarded everything to the town here as well, with all the study groups, et cetera. Um, we just got notification from FEMA. Uh, they'll be back at us with the maps again for June of twenty-twenty-one, uh, so we need to put it on our schedule for Springtown meeting. We have to go ahead and get this done, so we don't run into the same situation again, and we get stuck. So again, we'll just make sure that gets done there. And I think that's, uh, all I got.
Okay, Patrick?
All right, so, uh, obviously, one of my liaison projects was in here tonight with some of the things to do. Uh, the other thing I've asked them to do, um, as you well know, when we turned it over to them, they, they have, they were supposed to work on getting the rate structure changed, which has been very difficult. They've been having a lot of different culty with the two districts.
Yes.
Specifically. So I asked Jim to get a vote of his board to allow us to take it over. Because certainly we have a lot more authority and a lot more ability to be able to get, even if it requires, because, you know, that's public information. We, even if we have to get it by court order, we can get it.
Sorry about that.
And enough is enough, you know what I mean? It's been too long, and we need to get those records.
I think they got them from one, right?
No, they didn't. They didn't get them from anybody, really. They got, got the initial ones to look at, kind of thing. But nobody's committed to actually giving them to them on a regular basis, and that's why nothing's happened. So it keeps hanging out there, hanging out there, hanging out there, hanging out there. And, uh, I was told that one of the boards has a problem with, um, that if we start charging sewer rates based on water rates, people will use less water.
Oh, for goodness sake.
That's a good thing.
And, uh, you know, I said, Jim, you're funny, because what I said is, well, isn't that what you try to do every summer when you tell them they can't use the water? So that should be a good thing, not a bad thing, right? But anyway, I asked them to do that. I'm hoping that they'll allow us to take it over and handle it. It's, it, we just have more ability and more authority than they do to handle that kind of thing when it comes to talking to entities outside of, of the sewer department, you know?
Well, we would have to be the ones to work out an intermunicipal services agreement.
Exactly.
If we come to an agreement to get the data anyway, so might as well, might as well just be us, we'll just jump in.
Exactly, we've got to work out the agreement anyway, in the end result. So it's just better if they just turn over and say, okay, you guys get it done.
Yep.
And we'll go and get it done. Okay?
So he's, he's gonna put that on an agenda for his board to vote on?
He's gonna put it on his next agenda, yes.
Okay, we'll see what their vote is, we'll go from there.
Do you guys want to vote on, on doing that?
Do we want to vote?
Yeah.
Should we?
Well, do you want to do it, all of you?
I do, I think we should, uh, I think, I'd, I'd love to do it, I'd love to start.
Well, we have to wait till there's a request before we vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta have a request, you know?
They might not, they might not want to. I can't presume what they're gonna do.
It's really up to them to decide. I mean, if they think they can handle it, it's fine, but I think they've had a lot of difficulty.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and, you know, this has been an issue for, not just since they took over, forever.
Yes.
And not having actual numbers, and you're doing an EDU, um, so.
That's why the original, back in twenty-ten, that's why the article was written, to take the Sewer Commission away from the Board of Selectmen, because nothing was happening, and the assumption was, which is another wonderful word, that they would have, as a Sewer Commission, as a separate organization, have plenty of time to get this thing done. And when we turned it over to the Sewer Commissioners, we had done a forensic audit and everything, so they had everything in place.
Yep.
And we actually had, I think we referred to him as Dr. Poop.
Yep, Professor Poop. That's why I called the consultant.
But, oh, look, I can't blame them, they're doing it.
Yeah, I know.
They can't blame them, they're doing the best they can.
They're, they're in a tough spot.
They just don't have what we have.
Yep.
I don't know.
But that's what it is.
I don't know, and it's just process, and you have to follow through.
Exactly.
Process and follow through, whether it's them or us, and.
Somebody has to do it.
You just can't, you know, stop in the middle of it, so.
I, I agree.
However you want to do it, and, uh, I'm in favor of it. How, you know, what, what they want to do, and they put the request in, and.
Well, if they ask us, I, I asked them, and he said that he thought it was a good idea, so if he does it, then that's fine.
And if it's not us, hopefully they will.
I just wanted you to be aware, it might become.
Yep, that's good, thanks. Uh, anything else? Patrick? Judy?
Um, no, just want to remind everybody that the library, even though it's closed, is still open for business on certain days, and you can, it's actually, if you look at the numbers, the circulation numbers are up, um, which is fabulous, and I want to thank the employees in the library and all of the volunteers for all of the work that they do there.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Just a quick couple of things. Um, Planning Board did a, did a hybrid, uh, meeting yesterday, last night. So they did Zoom and also, you know, real-time and live. And, um, it was interesting, I like, I like, uh, I think that's a good thing to do, and, uh, they'll, they'll get some of the wrinkles out of it as they move forward, you know, and, and I think a lot of boards, um, want, you know, could adopt this approach, so that citizens at home, in order to keep the numbers down and who are uncomfortable, can still participate through the Zoom application while the board is actually running.
Yep.
Um, you know, someone who's administering, so that's, that's good, and I have to, you know, give them a pat in the back for, for doing that and trying that, and, um, you know, thank Ken, and, uh, he's kind of innovative in that sense, and trying to move forward, so, um, you know, thanks, and, uh, I was over to the Wareham Housing Authority today, just so people know, um, they have a kiosk outside, a bulletin board outside of their office, which has, affordable units, which could be in other towns, and also contact information for units within the town. Um, there's a couple of different processes, so, um, it was a good chatting with them on that, and, uh, hopefully, we can get some of that information and post it up on the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, come up with like a little section, so that people can go to it and, and know the process in order to get, you know, on the, um.
On the list.
Lists, in the application, in the, in the process, and, and as you know, we got some, uh, affordable housing vacancies outside of town, which was Yarmouth, Dennis, and, uh.
They sent us a notice.
Yeah, and, um, and you look at the, the costs, and it's still, you know, nine-something up to fifteen hundred and change. But, um, the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority is like the clearinghouse for that, and, um, and yet it goes through Yarmouth, too. It's, it's kind of interesting. Yeah, it was sent to us by Yarmouth Community Development, but if you're interested, you send the application to Plymouth Redevelopment, and I guess they do the lottery, the screening of the lotteries and stuff. So, um, yeah, I had to get that clarified, that's why I went over to the Wareham Housing Authority, because they've, they've been doing that for years.
Yeah.
Similar thing, so, uh, that, that's all.
Did they mention the status of the four units that we funded?
The what?
The four units.
No, you know what? Um, I will, I will, um, inquire.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sure the cost of, of building hasn't gone down. You, you know, I think two-by-fours in last year went from like two dollars and twenty-seven cents to four dollars.
Actually, they're up around seven dollars.
For, for eight-foot two-by-four?
Eight-foot two-by-four.
And that's, that's in like a month and a half.
Yeah, they've gone crazy.
Yeah, they just recently went up twenty-five percent again.
A sheet, I mean, oh, yeah, it's gone crazy.
In outcome? Because they can.
In outcome, because they can.
Yeah, pretty much. Demands there, so they can charge what they want.
It's a line of demand. Yeah, it has gone out of this world.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything. Uh, we have a set of minutes?
Yes, I move the approval of the minutes for September twenty-second to twenty-twenty.
We're all here.
So moved to second, rather.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Move to authorize the payment of the Law Office of Richard P. Bowen.
Where is he?
Second.
Okay, motion to pay Town Council by Judy, seconded by Patrick. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero on that. Okay.
Alan?
Motion through Joe.
Yay.
Motion by, uh, you two are slow.
Twenty minutes and nine, wow.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you, Wareham.
I saw, I need some entertainment.